Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the municipality of Monroeville's Citizens Night and Council Work Session. Before I ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please make sure your cellphones are on mute or off. We now kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And I'm gonna make a real quick executive session announcement, and I'll do this again on Tuesday as well. Council conducted an executive session to discuss the selling of municipal property before Citizens Night meeting, beginning at 6:45 PM until just a little bit after 7:00 PM. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the July 12, 2016, regular council meeting. Tim, if you'll grab our list to see if there's anybody signed in. Pamela, you're the only one that signed in, so come on down.
Sure, thank you.
And I didn't want to screw up your last name, that's why.
No, that's fine. My name's Pamela Bodziak. I am the Assistant Director at Monroeville Public Library, and I am also a Monroeville resident. And since I am the only one who signed up tonight, I will try to be brief. So, just some quick updates about what's going on this summer at the library. Summer is our busy time for programming, and we have a lot of new stuff happening, especially a lot of new things for adults. We're really trying to come up with programs for adults that will relieve stress and help rediscover creativity. So, some of the stuff that we have going, we have an adult coloring program that we're kicking off on July 19 at 6:30. If you've been in a bookstore or toy store lately, you've probably noticed that coloring books for adults have become a very in-vogue thing. They've shown it helps increase mindfulness and relieve stress, so please come join us for that. We also have a Kidlet for Adults Book Club that is kicking off on September 15. YA books have become very popular reads for adults, and so we're starting off this club with young adult books for adults to read and discuss, starting in September with Miss Peregrin's Home for Peculiar Children, which I think is a movie coming out in a few months, so please come join us for that. That club is actually gonna be held at Papa Rock's Pizzeria, so there will be good food to go along with the good discussion. We have been working with the Animal Rescue Center and Wildlife Rehabilitation in bringing different animal programs to the library. Last Friday, we had a very special guest, Casper, the white Texas snake, who came to teach the children about reptiles, and he was a huge hit. Oh, excuse me, she was a huge hit. The Rescue Center is coming back on July 27 to do a program on Wildlife Rehab 101. They're a great organization, they take in strays and rehabilitate wildlife, so we're very pleased to be able to work with them, and I think kids and the parents are pretty excited, too. Our annual teddy bear picnic is happening on July 14 at 11:00 AM, hopefully on the library lawn, if the weather permits. Children are invited to bring their teddy bear companion for the program. And we're having our Christmas in July Craft Night on July 26 at 7:00. That's an all-ages event, so anyone can feel free to come. Our big announcement is that our book nook is permanently installed. It's a year-round book sale that we're having. A very big thank you to the friends of the library who donated the shelves to allow us to make this possible. When you come into the library, you'll now see that there will be books and other materials for sale. The books and the materials are either withdrawals from the library that we're no longer gonna circulate, or they are donations from the public, so please come see us. We also have a snack bar and library t-shirts. And just one last quick reminder, there's still plenty of time to sign up for summer reading. That goes from the Read to Me Club for toddlers to adults being able to sign up for adult summer reading, so anyone of any age can join our summer reading program, read some good books, and win prizes. So, hope to see you there. Yes.
Is the art display sale still going on?
Are you referring to in our gallery space? Yeah, we still have our gallery space open with different local artists showcasing their art there every month. It's a different display every month, and they do have prints as well as their actual artwork for sale when that goes on, so that hasn't changed. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll leave the mic open for anybody who'd like to address council. Please sign in, sir. State your name for the record.
It's not a long name, so just be a minute.
You just forgot how to spell it.
Took a long time. My name is Robert Sarafini. I live in Monroeville. I just wanna say thanks to Jim Johns for the organization of a great parade we just had for the Fourth of July. I thought he did an excellent job in the organization, and I think everybody who participated did a good job, too. I also wanna thank Mike Adams for Turnpike Gardens. We just had some work done on Turnpike Gardens, and we're having more work done, and Mike has been there to coordinate a lot of the stuff. I've seen him several times, and I think he does an excellent job, and I just wanted to say thanks to Mike also.
Thank you, sir. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'll leave the mic open. Please sign in, state your name for the record.
My name is Ernest Anguar, and I'm your neighbor, I live in Panhills.
Sir, you're not a Monroeville resident?
No.
Sir, can you give him your card? If you don't live in the -- do you have a business in Monroeville?
That's why I'm here. I don't have a business in Monroeville, but I talked to James, I met him on 22, and he directed me that you guys should be having a meeting here, so I can bring my proposal to you guys and see what...
You would have to work through Mr. Hugis, our planning department. It's not appropriate to be here at this time, and I'm not trying to give you a bad time, sir, but...
No problem.
But, again, the proper procedure, we work with Mr. Hugis and his staff, and they'll help you with that, and again, you'd have to go through maybe Planning Department or the Zoning Hearing Board. You have a few steps to do before you can actually, you know, your business would come before us.
Do you guys have a card for him?
Yep. Jason's giving him a card.
Great.
It's on the side.
It's dangling.
Thank you. Kay Valerie Warning, I live in Monroeville. I just wanted to express my sincere thanks to Monroeville, Mr. Johns, for everything you did for the parade. It was another success, and for all the help that we wanted. Everybody was real nervous, you know, until that day, even that morning, but Rain held off for everything, and thanks to everybody, council, everybody, for all their help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, we'll leave the mic open for anybody who'd like to address council. Seeing none, we'll close that proportion of our meeting. We'll go to our agenda-setting meeting, and I did forget to mention today's date. It is July 7, 2016. And council, if you'll look at the minutes of Citizens Night meeting of June 9, 2016, the council work session of June 9, 2016, and the regular council meeting of June 14 of 2016. Are any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll move over to the payroll report. Once again, council, any additions or corrections on the payroll? On the list of bills and budget transfers, Linda, we will start off with you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Nick.
No questions, Mayor.
Ron.
Nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Paul.
No, sir.
Steve.
Nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. And we'll go over to the new business, and Tim, if you would, sir, please.
Okay, the first item under new business, Mayor's applicant is requesting final subdivision approval for the consolidation of parcel 743-G-7, 743-G-91, 743-G-24, 743-L-378, 743-L-373, 743-L-369, and 743-L-383 to create Lot 1 totaling 4.744 acres. The property is located at 3985 William Penn Highway in the C2 Business Commercial District.
I'd like you to do that faster.
Could you repeat that, please?
Jason, any issues with this?
No, there's not, Your Mayor. Like, as Tim was just mentioning, it's a consolidation lot at that address, on William Penn Highway and Duff Road. That was the former, came through before previously was the Group 6 Sigma or the Group 6 site. On this, there's a new property owner that purchased that at Sheriff's sale. It's a consolidation. That plan was never formally recorded, the previous plan that was splitting it into two lots. So, this original seven lots consolidation down into one. There was a couple minor comments. Things have been addressed, and it was recommended approval by the planning commission.
Questions or comments on this item before you?
Just so I understand, for the listening public, this is all the, as would be known as the Penn Monroe property.
Correct, yeah, the Penn Monroe, the smaller, narrow building. And all that stuff behind it. The house hockey, and then the house below there on Duff Road. Correct, yeah.
But that business on the corner, the businesses on the corner will still stay there, correct?
Correct, yeah, the...
Jiffy Loop.
The Jiffy Loop, thank you very much.
Then there's a little...
That's a separate parcel, and then that beside there, the audio car, audio shop.
Right, that will stay?
Separate parcel as well.
Okay, so that will stay, but from, that's a perfect picture. And it only runs to the end where the Penn Monroe is, or...
Correct, yeah, there's the Penn Monroe.
Does it go to where the Alamos Aquarium or anything is?
No.
Okay.
It's not included in the plan.
Jason, I see where they're, excuse me, I see where they're starting to bring Phil in.
That's correct, Ms. Wilson. Yes, they actually have, currently, they have three demolition permits for the house on Duff Road and for two of the three buildings on William Penn Highway. They're are bringing in Phil right now. They do, their NPDS permit was transferred to the new property owner, and they do have an active grading permit with demolition for the backfill of the demos.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Yes, Mayor. So, the one house on Duff, are there other residential parcels in there, or is that just the only residential parcel?
That's just the one, and that's actually Zone C2 Commercial, that one.
Okay.
Yeah, the line, the boundary line is pretty much right, is like the property line on that parcel is where it starts with the residential. And then included in there, there's, if you see on the plan, I'll joke and maybe zoom in, but there's a requirement there that our zoning ordinance, a 50-foot rear building setback when you have between the commercial and the residential zoning district.
Okay.
Now, this was proposed before to be a hotel.
Correct, yes.
Do we know what they're gonna do with this now?
Presently, not at this time. Asking with the applicant surveyor, he did not, his, he stated that he was not aware of anything. Their goal is this right time is consolidated back into one lot, coming back in for future development-wise.
Okay.
Linda, the only, there is an approved site plan from 2009, and that is for the hotel. That's the only active site plan we have, so if they want to change that, they have to come back through.
Correct.
Okay, but they could use that particular...
Site plan.
Site plan to go ahead and develop a hotel...
Yes.
Under those guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they actually have one more year to start, then it will be the end of limitations.
Under the permit extension act.
From now?
Right.
To be able to start the hotel under that existing site plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that the same owner group?
No, this is a different owner group.
But they could just still use that old site plan that was already drafted in '09?
Bob, you wanna speak about that? The transfer of the site plan from Group 6.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. They took assignment, those are essentially contractual rights, and they took assignment of those rights from the previous owner.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Jason.
Tim, if you would.
Okay, under motions, requesting Tuesday night a motion to authorize the advertisement to sell the attached list of used municipal vehicles and surplus equipment through online electronic auction after advertising one time in the official municipal newspaper 10 days prior to the date of the opening, bid opening. And there's a list of the equipment, and we do this every year. The first item is the recycling truck, which is part of, we have to sell that from the grant that we received two years ago for the new recycling truck that we purchased. We have to sell that, because that goes against the grant that we received. And other ones are, obviously, Public Works vehicles and police cars.
Now, for anybody to be in on this, Tim, you'll have it on our website where they can go to be on this stuff. Okay, very good.
On the Monroeville website.
No, no.
On the surplus website.
Well, we do it through our...
If they do that through our website, there's a link.
Yeah, we can put this on our website.
Yeah, let's definitely do that.
Yeah, we can put it on our website, that's no problem.
You agree?
Yes. What's the site? Are we using the hashtag?
Joe, what's the site?
GovDills.
GovDills, that's right, GovDills.
But beside GovDills, there's no issue putting it on our website as well, am I correct?
No. So...
Questions or comments on this item before you, council? Tim, if you would.
Okay, the second item is I'm requesting Tuesday night a motion to authorize to advertise for an amendment to the 2011-13 capital improvement budget. Council has before them money that is left in our pligot account, which is from three bond issues, and this would be from the 2011 bond issue. In that attachment to that ordinance, there's money allocated for a street sweeper for $230,000, which, that will be derived from other sources. We've needed a street sweeper here for several years now, we still haven't purchased it. And also, the HVAC library, last year, we discussed this during the budget sessions extensively, and our HVAC people here in Haas and also a vendor decided we only needed one boiler if there was gonna be a replacement down at the library. And the cool headline, the library director has $75,000 in our operating budget, so that money can be used for other purposes. So, those two items frees up $410,000. On the other side, on what we're gonna be purchasing with that would be matching to three different grants. One would be for the recycling grant that I just mentioned. Our share is $27,778 out of a $250,000, or I should say a $264,000 grant. And also, the Green Light Go grant, which is for the traffic signal at Northern Pike and West Patty Lane. And also, the $11,000 is for the LED program, which we discussed, I think it was about three months ago, here at the council meeting on replacing LED lights.
Would that be for new LEDs, not the ones that we already have?
That would be for last year's cycle.
Oh, okay.
We also applied for this year's cycle.
Okay, so that money will cover last year's?
That won't be billed until next year.
The extra ones that we got for last year?
This is for the ones we got last year.
Okay.
We're lagging a year with payments.
Okay.
Also, for a new plow spreader, Mack truck, a salt truck, $190,000, and that's with the plow spreader. They're not cheap. And also, the vehicle lift down at the Public Works Garage needs, it's more than a repair, it's virtually an enhancement for that repair. That lift down there has been, needed to be repaired now for at least about three years, and that's something that needs to be done PDQ. And there's gonna be a residual of $44,222. Any questions council has on this?
Continue on resolutions there, Tim.
Okay, under resolutions, the first is a housekeeping item, resolution for the disposition of records, acceptable municipal records manual. This would be for the finance and the police department's, police department.
Questions or comments on this item before you, council? Tim, if you would.
Okay, the second item is a resolution adopting an MOU between Allegheny County Conservation District and the municipality of Monroeville. This, more or less, is somewhat of a housekeeping item also. There are really eight headings on here, and each of them have a purpose, and they have, if you can go through them, a purpose and district responsibilities, along with the municipality's responsibilities. And you can see that there's actually eight headings, erosion and sedimentation, which is otherwise known as NPDS, and stormwater discharge, water obstruction encroachments, NPDS, which is the MS4 system, agriculture-related activities, watershed program, dirt and gravel, low-volume road program, which we don't have a lot of, data collection and information systems, and also an execution clause, which there is a termination clause in there if this would have to be terminated. I can't imagine why it would be terminated. All these things are state law, anyway. It's just a matter of formality with the Allegheny County Conservation District.
Questions?
Any questions on that? Paul Hugis could probably be able to answer those questions, a lot better than me.
Seeing none, moving on to the next one, Tim.
Okay, the next one is a resolution amending the developers agreement between Glen Arden Developers, Inc., and the municipality of Monroeville for the purpose of completing sidewalks. Mr. Starr was here at last month's, I believe it was Citizens Night, mentioning about getting his roads adopted, but before he does that, there are certain sidewalks that have to be completed, and you have in your packet a depiction of those sidewalks that have to be completed. Now, on the pink sheet, you have, we have these color-coded, so you can get to them a lot quicker under the different subject headings. The red portion, which would be, for instance, Tall Trees Court, if you look at that, which is around three-quarters of the cul-de-sac, that would be, sidewalk would be put in there, where the darker line, black line, that is where they already are, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct, Paul?
Yeah, I could put a color copy in everybody's boxes for your review of the weekend.
But this'll clean that all up, right? Like, we were talking, this'll clean this up quite a bit by having him put in some of the sidewalks, so in case the development takes for another 10 years to have anything done, it'll clean up the existing sidewalks right now.
In the resolution, Linda, it does. It sort of connects all the missing parts, if you will, to make sure there's a walking path, but it also, in the resolution, it says that he has, within five years, he's gotta complete the remaining sidewalks, that was the plan.
Okay.
So, he has to do some before the roads are accepted, and he has five years to finish the rest of it.
Okay.
So, we're not 15 years down a road and they're not complete.
Right, which is what we didn't want to get into.
That's correct.
Perfect.
And I'll put the drawing in your mailboxes for the weekend.
Any other questions or comments on this item before you, council? Tim, if you would.
Okay, and the last item here is a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement for the municipality's participation with the county of Allegheny for snow and ice control on county roads for the years 2016, 17, 18, and 19. I put, probably it's towards the end of where your packet is, a supplemental sheet, because what is in this stapled packet, the Beatty Road on there was incorrect, the amount of money. The amount of money we're receiving is virtually the same as we've received for the three-year contract, which will be, which ended this year. It's approximately $110,000 and some change that we'll be receiving, but the Beatty Road, the amount of money that we were receiving for that was incorrect. If you compare that with the supplement you have, which is loose, and the one that's in the packet, you'll notice the difference. So, that's why when you meet on Tuesday evening, the... So that's why, when you meet on Tuesday evening, the corrected one will be attached, and that's the one you'll be approving with the agreement.
Did that agreement end in 2015?
It ended in 200, correct, yeah, this passed, 2016, this past winter.
Because I'm just curious, 2016, as many years as I plowed snow and salt, you still have January, February, you've got winter weather, I'm just curious, that's all.
Yeah.
It ended in-
It ended 1516, winter.
Okay, I got you.
Any other questions, counsel?
Now-
Wait, so-
Irregardless of the salt, the price of salt, this is going to, this is a three-year contract.
Right.
I think we got messed around last, what was it, last year, or the last contract as far as-
Couple of years ago. That might have been PennDOT, that could have been PennDOT.
It may have been PennDOT instead of the county.
It could have been PennDOT.
No other questions, Mr. Ratcher, the one, the two ordinances?
Yes, and the first one, I'll paraphrase, this is an ordinance, amending ordinance 2529 regarding timber harvesting regulations. Essentially, what this ordinance does, this is the second part of our two-part effort to come into compliance with a state law called ACRE, which is a law that applies all over Pennsylvania and takes some of the local regulation away, and gives the regulation rights to the DEP. So this is the second, second half, this has been up before the Attorney General, they've reviewed it, they agree with it. We were able to negotiate some, some minor deviations to what they first wanted, and this will complete that process and settle the issue with the Attorney General's office if you adopt it.
Questions or comments, counsel? Bob, if you would.
It's an ordinance accepting the dedication to public use a certain road known as Rickinbacker Drive, together with the requisite storm sewers located within the street right-of-way, as more fully set forth on a drawing attached here too, and made a part of this ordinance.
I think, on that one, I'll have to ask Mr. Hugis, but I think that might need tabled due to the fact-
Yes, we have not received all the required documentation from the developer.
Where is that located?
Right beside the Golden Goblet, going up the-
Oh, okay, I thought it was behind the new Family Dollar. Is it behind or between?
It's the connecting road between 286 to Old Avery's, next to the Family Dollar.
Wherever the red light is going.
Just that little stretch, before you go up like Infinity Drive.
And it's not finished, all the catchbasins and stuff.
They have not supplied a final inspection release from PennDOT, because it connects to 286, and it's a required document before we pass the ordinance. I made them aware of it, I said that I would advertise it because of the advertising requirements, but they didn't have all the documents that I would recommend that we table the ordinance.
Okay.
As of today, I don't have it.
Questions or comments, counsel? Thank you. Now we'll move over to reports of our municipal staff. Bob?
No report, Mayor.
Tim, you have one item?
Yeah, I have one item. We've been talking about having curbside pickup for corrugated cardboard and newspaper for a little bit of time, about a year. We've received a new recycling truck, which we were talking about before, and a $250,000 grant we received from the DEP. And that new recycling truck gives us the capacity to be able to pick up newsprint and corrugated cardboard at curbside. Excuse me, so we're going to be starting this program, and Joe, can you put up the, and this is our new recycling truck with, I'm sure a lot of people have seen throughout the community. There's going to be some stipulations, as there has to be with any new program that you start, but beginning curbside recycling pickup of newsprint and corrugated cardboard will start Labor Day holiday week, and that is the week of September the 5th. But pickup will begin Tuesday, September the 6th, however, because that's a holiday week, and just like this week, it's kicked back a day. So the program will start on September the 6th. So beginning tomorrow, which is July the 8th, residents can pick up a free blue 20-gallon container, the same recycling containers that we have, and you can pick those up at the Public Works Garage at 200 Star Drive. And you can use that extra container for the recyclables of newsprint and cardboard being put in, being put in a new container. Residents will be asked for ID, because, you know, we can't have residents coming down and who are not residents, so they'll be asked for ID that they're Monroeville residents, and we'll be keeping a list of who picks up their free recycling. Additional recycling containers can be purchased normally for $15 apiece. Newsprint and corrugated cardboard can be co-mingled with other recyclables, such as plastic bottles, glass, and cans. I mean, you don't have to put, like the old days, going back 20 years ago, you had to separate them all, they can be co-mingled. Newsprint and corrugated cardboard must be loose in the recycling container with a lid attached, okay? The lid has to be on it, because if rain goes on newsprint, it becomes very heavy, it makes it more difficult for the recycling employees to pick and pick them up, or the container will not be picked up. So the lid has to be on, okay? Large pieces of corrugated cardboard, for instance, if you buy a refrigerator, washer, dryer, computer, they may be placed outside the recycling container, but they must be, they must be bundled and tied, a maximum of one foot thickness or six foot in length. So we don't figure we're going to have a lot of that, because everybody doesn't buy a refrigerator, you know, every year, every 10 years, or maybe every 10 years. Larger pieces of corrugated cardboard will not be picked up unless they are tied and bundled. And I'm going to repeat again, the lids also have to be on, because we can't have newspapers flying all over the place, or cardboard. The municipality will continue to have the large dumpsters that we have, the seven of the large dumpsters we have throughout the municipality, will still continue to operate those. So if you want to bring anything else to those, if you buy one, we have one behind the municipal building here, one's down at the library, and one's up at the community park, and there's four others throughout the municipality. Now, we're going to have additional communication coming out on this for the next two months. We're going to have a flyer going out, we'll have it on the website, hopefully, we'll have the municipal authority send out, those people that receive hard copy bills, hopefully, because I contacted the municipal authority, haven't heard back from them, hopefully, we'll be able to have a flyer going out in the bills. So, and we're also going to get a PSA, hopefully, in the Times Express, you know, announcing this. I think this is a long time coming for this municipality, that you don't have to take your newsprint and your cardboard, your corrugated cardboard, to the seven dumpsters that you have, you'll be able to be picked up at curbside. So that's going to start the week of Labor Day, okay? Anybody has any questions? I'll entertain any questions on that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Paul?
No, sir.
And we'll move over to our counsel. Linda, you're up first.
Okay, just two things. First, I wanted to give thanks to all the people that volunteered their time for the Fourth of July parade. Mr. Johns, I think you did a great job, so I think maybe you could do that again next year.
Let's see.
I think everyone would be really happy. My daughter also said, please send out a special thank you to the gentleman that did the baton in the silver outfit.
His name is David Peters, and he went viral.
And it went viral, and she had sent me a video and said, this man is awesome, who is he? So she really, really enjoyed that. And the last thing I would like to do is, I'd like to say a special thank you to Officer Candrak for all of his great work over the past 13 years that he did with the kids up at the high school. Unfortunately, the school board has voted to not have him continue his service with them, so I guess that's a blessing for us as a community. He will now be back to the police department full-time, we're happy to have him. Unfortunately, I just kind of feel bad for the relationships he developed at the high school, that he'll no longer be there for those. So, welcome back, Officer Candrak, full-time. That's all I have.
Nick?
Yeah, and just a tip of the hat to Mr. Johns for chairing the Fourth of July Committee, and to the whole Fourth of July Committee and everyone involved, Public Works, and everyone who was involved with the Fourth of July Parade, it's always a nice event for our community, so thanks to everyone involved. And a big congratulations to the new grandfather that's sitting beside me, Mr.-
(laughing) Happy!
Mr. Harvey, birth of his granddaughter, and congratulations.
Yay, Ron.
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, Poppy, you're up.
Everybody in good health?
Everyone's good.
I thought I was going to be the only one to be able to say that, but I wanted to congratulate my daughter, Kim, and her husband, Jason, for the birth of their daughter, in honoring me with my first grandchild last Tuesday, June 28th, so had to get that out first.
Tell them your name.
The second thing is, I just, I did some calculating, I just wanted everybody to know this, that on our list of bills every month, especially during the summer, we get maybe two or three pages of properties that we cut the grass on, either whether they're abandoned, or whatever the case may be. It's costing us about $2,379 a month, and I just wanted the residents to know that. It's coming up to about $16,000 a year. I don't know whether all the properties are abandoned, or just miscared for, or whatever, but that chunk of money does come out of your tax money, and I thought you should know where it's going. That being said, I checked in at the request of a couple residents on the house on Logan's Ferry Road, that had been a topic so many times before, and yes, the taxes were paid on it. And the gentleman that bought that, that's going to flip it, I guess, by the way, if you've driven by it, he's doing a beautiful job. Monroeville got $2,379 in back taxes, which is from 2009 to 2015. The rest of the money, of course, went to the county and school district. So to answer that question, they did pay the back taxes. Other than that, that's it.
Before I get to you, Jim, Tim had, I forgot one other issue on-
Yeah, I forgot to mention one thing about the recycling program as far as picking up newsprint and corrugated cardboard with respect to the picking up your recycling container. Everybody in the community will have one year from when it begins, so it'll be Labor Day 2017. You have one year to pick up your free recycling container. I don't want everybody rushing down, you know, and having a line within the next two months, or even tomorrow.
Really?
Yeah, you have, the program will start the week of Labor Day, but you have a year to pick up, because the additional recycling containers are being paid by the grant, okay? So that's why we can afford to do that. We talked about before getting larger containers, but it was just too cost prohibitive to get the larger containers, but I just wanted to mention that, I felt to mention that.
Mr. Lido, I have one question. There's been issues with some of the recycling containers, the lids going missing. I mean, the container's good, but there's no lids. Either the wind's taken them away once they've been emptied-
They don't fit on, worry.
Yeah, so they don't stay on secure, so, you know, maybe people will just need to be able to pick up a lid, because you can't put it in there without a lid, you're saying?
They, the lids and the cans come together from the manufacturer.
So we don't have any extra lids?
I don't believe, I can talk to Mike Adams, but I don't believe they, you can buy them separately.
I bet there's hundreds of them in the woods.
Oh, there are.
I'll find out.
I don't mind.
But we do have to have lids on it, because if it rains-
You can put your plastics without the lid, and then just make sure the paper and corrugated cardboard have lid on it.
They can't pick those cans up if they're full of waters.
That's true.
I see.
They have holes in them.
I was going to say, they drain, the ones we have now drain.
Well, that's why it's okay with-
Just the paper ones.
Newspapers are different stories.
Okay, that was just my question, because those lids are so hard to keep a hold of.
But as it stands right now, there's going to have to be lids on there, but I'll see if you can get the lids separately, I don't know.
Okay.
Jimmy?
Yes, sir. You know, in my four years, and some change, sitting up here, my reports are normally pretty quick, but I'm about to become a chatty Cathy, so I'll apologize now.
Oh, boy.
Well, I can't help it. It's either tonight or Tuesday, so I'm going to do it and get it over with. First off, the Monroeville Convention Center. Saturday, July 16th and 17th, the Greensburg Train Toy Show. On Friday, the 22nd of July through the 24th, Half Price Books Clearing Sale. On July 30th and 31st, a Rubber Stamp and Scrapbook Show. On August 12th through the 14th, Steel City Corn will be there. On August 19th through the 21st, Camp Coins and More Promotions. August 25th through the 28th, Just Between Friends, and the 27th and 28th of August is a Showmasters Gun Show. That's the convention center. I'd like to thank Val and Bob for noticing, Val was part of the committee for the parade, thank you, thank everybody for noticing. You know, I've said it 100 times in my life, I appreciate everybody noticing, but you can only be as good as the people you surround yourself with, and I was surrounded by a gang full of people that knew what to do with it. Mr. Adams, thank you kindly for all the work you did in Turnpike Gardens. Thank you to everybody, the parade committee, for all your hard work. I'm sure most of you folks don't realize what it takes to put that parade together. We had a team of about 20 folks, most of the time attended the meetings and go any extra mile. And I'd like to take a special thank you to Kelly Perry, Kathy Seviller, Mr. Paul Estock, Linda Moy especially, and to my buddy Billy Hillgrove, because they were the emcees, he and Kathy, and they did an absolutely wonderful job. You know, until I got involved with this a year ago, I never realized what, just what was involved with the parade, and I mean, geez, I mean, from Mike Adams and his crew of guys, doing what they do, from the tents to pick something, the chairs, the, just, the list is endless. Harold Kotowski, if something ever happens to him, somebody better pay attention, because he's a guy that learns up the road. And I mean, he spends a lot of time doing it, I don't know how he gets that done, and I mean that so sincerely. How about David Peters? We talked about him, I've heard so, I had so many phone calls about, he was our baton twirler, and I just can't list as endless how my phone just rang off the hook. To that point, the fireworks. I seem to be the fellow that gets to make the final call as to whether or not the fireworks go off. His name is Sean Bogey. Young fella, interesting story, his dad, for 25 years, set off the fireworks. He took over from, and he's in the family. He and his wife and one other someone else do this. I was up and down that road, I don't know how many times, in fact, Mr. Duncan was with me one of them times, because it was raining. So it's a judgment call, and I went down, he had everything covered up, and he said to me, JJ, what would you like me to do? And I'm like, I don't know, I mean, you're the fireworks expert. And he said, well, if it's a drizzle, they go. If you tell me go, they're going. If it's a thunder dump or, we're going to have to cancel. I said, okay, I understand that. I had a few complaints, not many, I guess what happened? Fireworks went off, and because of the clouds and the drizzle, and there was smoke, and I guess you couldn't see as much as you wanted to save it. For that, I'm sorry, but unfortunately, you can't control the weather, we did the best we could. And on a lighter note, everybody knows, in my time being up here, I don't normally get involved or talk too much about our animal control guys. I had a situation in the neighborhood, it's a long story, I'll make it short, but I had a situation that was actually pretty scary, involved a family, and a couple little kids, and a whole gaggle full of raccoons. And one of those raccoons was pretty nasty, and thanks to Mike Strom and Todd, for the last six days in a row, there has been a raccoon captured and removed from that property. So my hats off to you guys, and thank you, and with that, I'm done.
Paul?
I can't follow that. I think I'm good.
Steve?
Yeah, just real quick, from my, some of my residents on McKinney Drive, I've talked to Paul Hugis, and it's still an ongoing thing, on the demolition of the 2037 McKinney property known as the Forghey House.
Forghey.
Forghey, yeah. So Paul's still working on that, we haven't forgot you guys. And also-
I have a phone call to the neighbor, I'll call her tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, yeah, please do. And again, thanks to Councilman Johns and Linda Moy and Paul Estock and the committee for their great job on the parade. And last of all, how about right out here, these flowers? We were coming by the other day, and my wife says, why don't ours look like this? So, I mean, Public Works, Kenny Zizak.
Better get a-
Yeah, Kenny Cut, Zizak. What a, I mean, they're beautiful. I don't know how he does it, I got to get them over to my house. But anyhow, it looks great, and that's all I have, thanks.
Paul?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilman Johns and the whole committee. I'd like to thank our police department, they did a terrific job out there. And that's all I have tonight. Oh, excuse me, one more thing. The crowd was tremendous. was tremendous. I don't know how many people were there, but each year it keeps growing, and it's so exciting to see all those people there. And, uh, and the bubble gum was very good.
Okay, Nick, you had one more thing?
Yeah, Mayor, sorry. I failed to mention this, uh, this, because I can't do it on Tuesday, because it actually happens this Sunday. Uh, one of our Monroeville Summer Concert Series, presented by the municipality of Monroeville, sponsored by UPMC East, 6:30 PM. It's, uh, totally 80s, obviously, an 80s band, 80s cover band, a lot of fun, but it's this Sunday, it's 6:30 at Tall Trees Amphitheater at the community park. So, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll see you out there. And thank you, Mayor.
I, I didn't turn the page on my notes. I, it had to do with, uh, the school board letting go of Officer Candrak, and, uh, as Linda said, uh, I'll be glad to have him back on the police department, but we all, I'm sure you received the same letter I did. Uh, and they did not budget for the SRO. I think they're gonna be sorry they did. Uh, I'm not gonna tell the school board how to run their business. I just, for a long time, I know that Officer Candrak has developed relationships up there and trust, and, um, I just think he's gonna be missed. I'm glad to have him back on the police department working, uh, but I just think they made a mistake.
All righty, and, uh, Jim?
Would you call on Bob before he falls out of his chair?
Get up to the mic, Aaron, my man. I'll let you do it.
And will you tell us how Ralph's shoulder's doing, too, while you're up here?
I punched him just before we come in. My name is Robert Seraphini. I live in Monroeville. Uh, we have this ordinance, D1, and it was advertised in the paper that they're gonna have a meeting next Wednesday at 7:00. Now, I don't see how this can have gotten in here before the meeting, which you're asking for the public to discuss it, can precede that. Now, I think when you have a meeting at 7:00 and you're asking the public to be there, I think this ought to be tabled until such time as you have all these people putting their input into it.
That's certainly this counsel's...
What are, what are we talking?
One, which one?
D1, which is the harvesting?
The timber ordinance.
Oh.
Timber ordinance.
I knew it was what he's talking about. That's up to these folks.
Last week, they had it advertised in the paper. I was, I came up and talked to, uh, Paul here, and everything is leading to the fact, there's gonna be a meeting of the people next Wednesday, the 12th, at 7:00. Advertised in the paper, come up and get familiar with it and everything else, and discuss it. Now, to put this in the minutes here tonight...
Who's holding this meeting?
Bob, who's holding the meeting?
It was had to men, come up at the municipal, uh...
Or is, are you talking about the regular council meeting on Tuesday night?
No, Wednesday night. It was advertised in the paper at the bottom of the thing to come up and talk.
That might have been a misprint.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
I didn't see it.
It was our, our meeting, too.
Talking about a legal advertisement?
In the notification.
Well, how about if we check?
Anything I can know, that could be a misprint, because it's a legal advert... Legal advertising has to be advertised between 7 and 30 days, so in a case with the Times Express, because of lead time, I mean, that thing is in there 10 days before that, uh, the municipality will be considering to take action on whatever ordinance it is. I mean, that's state law.
Well, if I bring the notification up, I hope I didn't read it incorrectly, but if I bring it up and it is in there, I would hope that we could table this until that meeting.
Well, if the notify, well, if the notification's incorrect, yeah, you may have a point. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speculate.
I'll bring it up here and drop it off tomorrow.
But you know what, Bob? What I wanted to say is, and this is very sincere, too, and I, I hear what you're saying, but we're just following the law. And I understand you need your input, but we are fol, am I not correct in this?
This is the Attorney General's witness, correct?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Hugus and I had a very nice meeting this morning to discuss it and everything. And I'm, I'm aware of a lot of things that were done there. Paul made it amply clear to me what was going on. But I would like these people, like I said, I hope I didn't read it incorrectly, but if it's in there, the fact that they're supposed to have a meeting at 7:00 next Wednesday, I would like to put this on hold.
Well, Bob, you wanted to respond?
No, I just wanna say, if, if it was advertised improperly, we may have to put it on hold anyway.
That's true.
However, if we find out that the ad was not, uh, incorrect, then it's obviously up to counsel whether or not they move forward or wait and hear the citizen input and then act on it next month.
So if we could, tentatively, like I said, that's my request. If it is come Tuesday night, and where you have a meeting on Wednesday, I would ask to have it tabled at that time.
Your point is well taken, sir.
Yeah, and be clear.
But the meeting's Tuesday, though.
Yeah, to be clear, we're not...
I know, our meeting is Tuesday night for the, but I mean, if the meeting is Wednesday for the, which it was advertised, uh, to discuss the ordinance.
Sure, I, I see.
Where was it being held, the meeting? Where was it supposed to be held?
They said in the municipal building.
Yeah, to clarify.
None of us are aware of this.
Okay, well, like I said, I'll be glad to be as...
We don't have the advertising proof.
I'll drop it off at the municipal.
Unless it was the regular meeting, Miss Data.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, if you still have it, we're gonna find it.
I do have it. It's in my folder.
Bring that in.
I definitely will bring it in tomorrow, and then we'll go, or I'll give you, even give it to Mr. Johns if you want.
We'll find it. And yeah, give it to Jim. Have it be great.
He's my emissary.
I get that. You need to find a new one. All right, I'm gonna wrap it up. Again, I just wanted to say, Jim, you and the staff did great on the Fourth of July, and thank you to all the residents that did come out and enjoy. And, uh, I think enough was said on Officer Candrak, but I do welcome him back into the regular, uh, part of our department, if you will. And with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.